I call this meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order and as we go into a moment of reflection, I hope that we all here will remember Ashlyn Poole and Alex Leonard and their families in our prayers. The young high school lady was killed the other night in a car accident and Mr. Leonard was seriously injured, so if you could, let's take a moment to reflect. Thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And I'm going to ask Councilman Sam Bishop if he would do the honors.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda? And the answer, that would be yes. I would like to move the student resolutions that we're going to approve in the consent agenda to item A in the introductions and presentations. We'll move the other two down one letter. And I would also like to move introductions and presentations to Roman numeral five and we will move the citizens' comments to Roman numeral six.
So move.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
This is 6-0. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. We're looking at approval of the town council minutes July 10th, monthly bills, council resolution of support for fiscal year 2020, smart scale applications for the following projects: North Franklin Street, Pepper's Ferry Road Connector Route, Parkway Drive Extension to South Franklin Street, Fallen Branch Road Extension to Sherwood Drive, North Franklin Street, Depot Street Intersection Improvement Project, resolution in recognition of Christiansburg High School Boys Four by Eight Hundred Meter Team, and a resolution in recognition of Rachel Lloyd, Christiansburg High School Girls varsity pole vaulting state championship. So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a comment to make on the resolution to support for the smart scale applications. Conspicuously absent from this list of four, which is, the limit is four, is the trail project, the Cambria Trail Project that we had voted to put on there. After meeting with Mr. Wingfield and Mr. Nelson, I'm satisfied that it's a smart move to take it off. The project isn't quite ready for that, but the reason I bring that up is a footnote is I will be proposing to council that we advance some plan development on that project very soon to get it ready for, and make it more attractive for funding applications, and more on that later, but I just want to bring that to council's attention that it's not on here, but it's something we need to, I think, I'm going to bring that to council that we can advance and get it ready for funding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can't hear very well back here. Do you have a volume up?
Well, we did have to, but they turned it down. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Thank you. That is 6-0. Going to ask Mr. Showalter if he will help me in the presentation of our state championship awards.
Be happy to.
That was his back.
You should not squeak folks.
Somebody swears with you.
First, I'd like, we would like to recognize Rachel Lloyd, who is the state pole vault championship, and I'm going to read a resolution. Come on up. Whereas Rachel Lloyd won the girls varsity pole vaulting state championship with a jump of 10 feet despite adverse weather conditions, and whereas this achievement brings honor and recognition to Christiansburg High School and the Christiansburg community. Now therefore be it resolved that the council, the town of Christiansburg hereby expresses its congratulations to Rachel Lloyd for her outstanding performance in the VHSL Group Three A state championship, and we extend our best wishes for her continued success. Upon a call of an a vote or nay vote, full blown resolution of a regular meeting, Christiansburg Town Council, held July 24, 2018, members of council stood opposite their names indicated, and that was 6-0.
Rachel, congratulations. You're a... One more. One more. One more. One more. One more. One more. Rachel. Very nice.
Next, we have a resolution recognizing the boys eight hundred meter relay team. Kentucky Ethan Mills, Cooper Neville, Nible, Alex Waddy, and Trey Wilson, come forward, please.
Good stuff, guys.
Very good stuff. Don't get in front of the mayor. We have a resolution for each of you, and Henry, if you want to hand those out as I read. Whereas Christiansburg High School Boys varsity four by eight hundred meter team won the state championship with a time of 8.06, 0.69, and whereas this team also recently won the emerging elite division at the New Balance National Championships, and whereas these achievements bring honor and recognition to Christiansburg High School and the Christiansburg community. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Christiansburg hereby expresses its congratulations to Ethan, Cooper, Alex, and Trey for their outstanding performance in the VHSL Three A state championship and the New Balance National Championship, and we extend best wishes for your continued success. That was approved of the Christiansburg Town Council tonight in the 6-0 vote. And I understand you guys are all underclassmen, like sophomores and juniors and stuff?
Yeah. We were starting to see you were all coming in the senior year.
So we'll go back up here next year, understand?
Let's get to the middle.
The mayor in the middle. Your bodyguard, how's that?
Can we get Rachel with them? Yes, can we get Rachel with them?
Good idea.
She's a senior now, too, so she'll be happy.
No, come over here.
She's still taller.
I'm not saying nothing, Mike.
The truth hurts, Sam.
You guys will love the bow ties and the shirts.
Really, really.
That looks sharp.
Next, under introductions and presentations, introduction of new town employees, Terry Caldwell, Director of Aquatics.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here this evening to introduce the newest Aquatics Center team member, Mr. Blake Holman. Blake is our program coordinator, and what that means is he oversees all of the swim lessons, all of the water fitness programs, the summer camp, and the after-school program, and all of our special events. Blake graduated from Radford University in 2017 with a Bachelor of Science in Exercise, Sport, and Health Education. He also holds an Associate Degree in Information Systems Technology. Blake has experience managing and supervising several recreation fitness centers, including the most recent position as the Assistant Fitness Supervisor with the town of Withville. On a personal note, Blake is an avid bodybuilder, personal trainer, and fitness athlete. Blake is an American Natural Bodybuilding Federation Men's Physique Professional. He recently competed in the Virginia Natural Championships in Roanoke and took first place, winning his first pro show. He also competed in the MPC Charlotte Cup, taking first place in his class in an awarded national qualification. Blake brings to our team superior customer service skills, information system networking, marketing, health, nutrition certifications, and education. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Blake Holman to the Aquatics Center in our town.
Terry, I always wondered if Blake would come up and say a few words. I go swimming in the mornings once in a while, and I see Blake religiously out there bringing the kids in. Could you go over a little bit about the summer camp and how, in two minutes?
Strike a pose, Blake.
Yeah, so the summer camp, we have it during the week, starts at 7:30 in the morning, drop off 7:30, 8:30, and then pickup is from 4:30 to 5:30 in the evenings. So we have different, I guess, themes each week, so there's been themes from Kids Kitchen, where we do, I guess, we made, we baked stuff, we made smores, and all kinds of stuff like that, and then just different things weeks like that. Also, we have Our Town coming up as well, which I know some of you will be intending to meet the kids and stuff like that as well. Today we had, or this week, we had Music Mania. They did a little talent show today. All of them got up in front of the other members and sang, they danced, they did all kinds of stuff, so they're having a blast with that, so I think it's going really well.
Thank you. All right. Before, we're going to take a short recess in order to allow council and all to meet our champions, but, you know, we have recognized our champions tonight for their outstanding performance, but I'd like to go a step further and recognize the parents and family members for the sacrifices that you make in getting these kids to practice and taking them here and taking them there. So, parents, give yourself a hand. You deserve it. We'll take about a three or four minute recess until we get into citizens' comments. You're free to leave at any point other than council. Reconvene a town council meeting. We have one item left in the introductions and presentations. That's Shirley Fortier, Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity, the New River Valley, to present on the operations priorities and goals of the organization.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to tell you a little bit about Habitat for Humanity today. There's not a single time that I don't do a presentation about Habitat where at least somebody doesn't say, wow, I didn't know that. So I call this sort of Not Your Father's Habitat or Habitat today. Our mission is to build strength, stability, and self-reliance through shelter. This is the Habitat that most people are, think of, the image most people think of when they think of Habitat, and that is still true. But today I'd like to tell you a little bit about what, in addition to this emblematic photo that we've been up to, and how we would like to collaborate with Christiansburg. The Habitat house has changed quite a bit. We're still building single-family homes, but we build them differently. We build them with at least one zero-step entrance that you, like you see here. We build them with covered front porches and back porches. We build them to be highly energy efficient. They exceed EarthCraft standards. This particular house has been Floyd, and their highest electric bill has been $100 over the last two years. We've upgraded our materials. They're sided with hardy siding. They have laminate wood floors, tile flooring. We want to build these houses to-be houses that everybody's proud of, not just 10 years or 20 years, but 30, 40, and 50 years from now. This happens to be the kitchen of that home. We're building in storage. We're using all-wood cabinets, and we've added more light. We're particularly proud of this house. It was designed by a J-Tech faculty member to address some of the issues that we have had, storage being one, those covered porches being another, so that these are places that are more livable, we think. They're three bedrooms and two bathrooms. They're 1,288 square feet, and that's a pretty typical model for our single-family home today. I was proud of this one. We had realtors go through it. This was in Floyd again, and they said we could sell this house all day long, and this is a house they don't mean just for people of low to moderate income. We're also building homes through the Giles Technical School, which has a fully formed vocational building and construction program. We bring the job site to the students. The instructor has told us that he would not have this program, he would not be there if we didn't bring the job site to the school, because it's just too hard to teach the kinds of skills around home building without this. So they're building a modular home for us in two parts, and when they get done in the spring, we move it on to our foundation and finish it over the summer. They are beginning their fifth house. You get to see how we get it out of there. They get it to this stage, we bring it to the site, and we side it. This not only increases our productivity, but it helps us provide future building and construction majors at Virginia Tech and future people to join the trades. I don't know if you've recognized as a council, but we're seeing throughout the region a dearth of people in the trades to fill the jobs that we have. We're also a community housing development organization, and like any good acronym, it's a CHODO. That is new for us over the last three years, and it means a couple of things. One is it means that while we still build single-family homes, we also are collaborating with municipalities and other organizations to build communities, and some of the ways that we've done that, in Blacksburg, there was a project where Trailer Home Park was become, being sold, and the residents were being dislocated and becoming a new residential project. We became a facilitator between the town, the developer, the park owner, and the displaced residents to try and help meet everybody's competing priorities. We're also participating in projects like the Prices Fork, repurposing of the old Prices Fork Elementary School. There are 16 apartments for seniors 55 and up. I have a hard time, I struggle over calling 55 without the seniors, and that's why I felt it, once I became one. Our role in that was to spend time with potential residents in there, knowing that this is a different type of client, and that we've wanted to understand what their needs might be and what some of those transitions are, and they did drive some of the design changes in what would become the apartments for these residents. Three of the people on that design team currently live in that building. And another collaborative project that we work as a development organization has been Aging in Place Leadership Team from New River Valley. I think you've seen a presentation on the time banks. That was a direct result of our work with Critical Home Repair, where we're seeing a burgeoning problem with people who are aging in their home, and as their physical and financial resources start to dwindle, the demands of their home can rise, and so we see time banks as one of those solutions, as well as workshops and planning. Some of the accomplishments we've had this past year, we've completed, built and completed three homes. The two in Pulaski were part of a community development block grant project. We were part of a bigger collaboration that completed over 22 homes. Two of the, the new construction was our role. We didn't do the rehabs. We did new construction, and that one, Pembroke, came from the Giles Technical School. We counsel, and this is something that often is a surprise, for every household that we work with to buy one of our homes, we're counseling 10 or 12 other households to help them become mortgage-ready in budget counseling and debt remediation, so it's not just about the one family that buys the one house in our process. We provide over, last year, over 9,000 volunteer hours on our job sites and in our restorers, and it's, we see it as a big responsibility of ours to help the community find a way to serve. We're planning a micro-home cluster development in Floyd, or we're hoping to have a micro-home. We're seeing more and more people who, households that want to live in ones and twos, not just seniors, but millennials, and so we want to build a smaller footprint, and I'm particularly passionate about finding a home designed at a better box for under $60,000 for that population that can't buy the house that I showed you when we first started this presentation. We are in, in the site planning phase for a seven-unit townhome project in Blacksburg, and I'm going to speak to that multifamily in just a minute. It is our first project of this size and scale, but Montgomery County is where the work is, and it's where the affordability is leased. It's where we need to be, and it's where land is hardest for organizations like ours to come by. So in the county, in Montgomery County, we're going to be building multiples if we can. Under construction, we currently have a duplex on, in between Johnson Street and North Street, so if you're available and want to stop by, Councilman Sachs and game, we worked with us last weekend. It is a model of the townhome that we're going to be building in Blacksburg, and it's great fun. We have a single-family home in Parisburg, and we're still looking for a homebuyer for it. This is a schematic of the townhome project that we will do in Blacksburg. I promise you, it won't be gray. We submitted this as part of our rezoning project because we didn't know what colors they would be. The Blacksburg Presbyterian Church has generously donated the land for this project. It is one block off of Main Street. It is walkable to everywhere, and we're excited about being able to put families so close to where a lot of the work is. This is an example of the micro-home clusters for families and for seniors that we foresee in the future, and I bring that up because one of the challenges with creating clusters of home and still with big green space around it is, I'll make it questions about who our homebuyer is, and this is probably one of the biggest myths, well, the first biggest myth is Habitat gives homes away. We don't. We sell our homes, and I'll tell you how we do that in a minute. But our homebuyer, they have steady incomes, they pay their bills, they need access to a mortgage, they can't get one without our help, and they're willing to work for their dream. Our decision is made based on their need, which is determined by, in Montgomery County in particular, of what we call cost burden debt. They might be able to find a place to rent, but it's 40, 50, 60% of their income, and HUD recommends 30% of income being the financially stable place to be. But other issues like weatherization, overcrowding, substandard arrangement, ability to pay. This is where we spend a lot of time with our clients. They don't always present. They usually have student debt or bad debts behind them. We work on budgeting. We spend nine to 12 months with the household before they become mortgage-ready. And then finally, they're willing to partner. We're a community organization. We have volunteers showing up to help them build their house, and they do what we call sweat equity, but they volunteer on their home and the homes of others as well. The sale, we control the cost to build the house through volunteer labor and donated material, sometimes donated land, sometimes we purchase it, so we keep the cost affordable in that way. Their down payment, we have, we work with them, it's only $1,000, and so if there is an opportunity, a hand up, that's what we call ourselves, a hand up and not a hand out. The sweat equity they put in, you might have noticed immediately, particularly in Montgomery County, that if we only charge what it costs us to build it, that house is probably worth a lot more on the market. So we take a soft second mortgage to protect that instant equity so that the house will be lived in and not flipped. So where's our revenue count from? I think everybody knows we're a traditional fundraising nonprofit organization, but we also have a restor. I know Councilman Bishop, thank you for shopping. We receive gently used donated material. It's a home improvement thrift store, and it's, last year delivered $120,000 profit. It built a house last year, and so. We also, our fundraiser as a CHODO, we're able to implement home money through the HUD programs, and then our homebuyers repay the donor dollars through their mortgage payment, and that is a major source of our income. So in conclusion, you know, what are our challenges, not only throughout the New River Valley, but particularly here? Finding and helping families become mortgage-ready. Our, we hand out flyers, I stuff backpacks. It's the word of mouth that helps. Our most qualified homebuyers recognize they'll be a Habitat homebuyer, because they don't necessarily think of themselves that way. To give you an example, our police officers in every town in their first five years qualify for Habitat. Our schoolteachers in most communities in their first three years qualify for that. So I'll leave that image in your mind. It's by word of mouth, the helping people see this opportunity. Developing a consistent skilled volunteer workforce across a large geography. When we build in Floyd, my Giles County volunteers don't go, so to meet that challenge, we intend to go and build more than one house in the location that we're, that we're in so that people can find us, donors, volunteers, and homebuyers all at one time, and then go to another locality. Montgomery County has the biggest affordability issues and the most expensive leased available land, and that's one of the places I hope you keep in mind with us as you look at light removal. We did this in Pulaski. We can fill in places that have been torn down. We can receive, if, and council has the opportunity to forgive, back taxes on blighted properties that's donated to Habitat. There are techniques that we can turn what are eyesores or negative attributes in town into positive opportunities. Christiansburg is the best place for Habitat to build, because it's closest to the work, it's closest to the transportation hubs, USDA loans work here, and they don't in other areas, so it is a good spot for us to be looking for infill projects. The need for affordable rentals is a challenge that we recognize. Habitat has always been an ownership model, but we are taking into consideration that if we could provide an opportunity to rent, an affordable rent for a year or two, that you can become mortgage-ready faster than if you're paying 40, 50, 60%. We, as I mentioned, we recognize the need for repair and maintenance is growing and will continue to grow, and we're looking at ways to resolve some of those. And then the new tax bill is going to change donor behavior. We don't know how, but all nonprofits are faced with that, and I call that to your attention because it's no small issue. And finally, I'll leave you with, then, with some of the opportunities, because I think I've spoken to them already. I see it as our role to help educate communities that stable households start with financial stability and having a home that you can rely on and be safe and face some of your other challenges. Those stable households, they lead to stable communities, and stable communities lead to stable economies. It's a pretty logical trajectory, I think, if you accept, and that stable economies are something we all aspire to. I thank you for your time.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment and ask a question from Ms. Fortier. It was a wonderful presentation. Our challenge with the, you said with Blacksburg is, is in the federal government's eyes, Blacksburg has a lot more low income than we do, which is sort of an interesting paradox, and that's, that's just a comment, it's sort of an irony. But the funding, you mentioned the town of Blacksburg and a lot of activity there. Is the town itself participating financially?
Yes, so that townhouse project, I'm glad you asked that question, because I think difficult projects require public-private nonprofit partnerships, and so the property that the church donated is, right now, it's not been developed for the last 60 years because it's, it's a runoff ditch for about 15 acres to the east, and so it's got a water problem, and to solve it... Christiansburg is the best place for Habitat to build because it's closest to the work, it's closest to the transportation hubs. USDA loans work here, and they don't in other areas. So it is a good spot for us to be looking for infill projects. The need for affordable rentals is a challenge that we recognize. Habitat has always been an ownership model, but we are taking into consideration that if we could provide an opportunity to rent, an affordable rent for a year or two, that you can become mortgage-ready faster than if you're paying 40, 50, 60%. We, as I mentioned, we recognize the need for repair and maintenance is growing and will continue to grow. And we're looking at ways to resolve some of those. And then the new tax bill is going to change donor behavior. We don't know how, but all nonprofits are faced with that. And I call that to your attention because it's no small issue. And finally, I'll leave you with, down with some of the opportunities, because I think I've spoken to them already. I see it as our role to help educate communities that stable households start with financial stability and having a home that you can rely on and be safe and face some of your other challenges. Those stable households, they lead to stable communities. And stable communities lead to stable economies. It's a pretty logical trajectory, I think, if you accept, and that stable economies are something we all aspire to. I thank you for your time.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a comment and ask a question from this four-year. It was a wonderful presentation. Our challenge with the, you said with Blacksburg is, is in the federal government's eyes, Blacksburg has a lot more low income than we do, which is sort of an interesting paradox. And that's, that's just a comment, that's sort of an irony. But the funding, you mentioned the town of Blacksburg and a lot of activity there. Is the town itself participating financially?
Yes, so that townhouse project, I'm glad you asked that question because I think difficult projects require public-private nonprofit partnerships. And so the property that the church donated is, right now, it's not been developed for the last 60 years because it's, it's a runoff ditch for about 15 acres to the east. And so it's got a water problem. And to solve that water problem, it's, it's going to take a lot of money. So we have some HUD money to help with that. But the town is actually going to, they recognize that we're helping them, they're going to help us with the sidewalk and the rerouting of the stormwater. So we're paying for the design, and they're actually going to do the work.
Okay, so the, so their participation is not CD block grant money, it's actually infrastructure assistance. Very interesting. Okay, it was a great presentation and hope that we can help.
Thank you so much.
And great ideas.
Thank you.
And did you, USDA, sort of ironic.
It's very ironic.
They do not lend in the town limits of Blacksburg.
They could be using CDVG money for sidewalks potentially themselves.
Okay. Well, with, some great ideas.
You know, I saw on TV, what was it, last week? I guess it's another group, but I think it was Channel 10, was, had, were working to build a house, and I think it was completed. Andrew, do you have anything more to say about that?
That actually was in the Ronoche chapter. Each, I should have mentioned that while Habitat is an international organization, I like to call it, we're all locally owned and operated. We're part of a federated nonprofit model, which means that we make all our own local decisions. We have local volunteer leadership. And so Ronoche has their own affiliate, and the New River Valley, we cover the four counties and the city of Radford. So that actually wasn't our project, but they partnered with WSLS, right?
Yeah.
And the TV loves to build. I hate building a house in a week. It's great for drama, it's not great for a great house, but that's what they did.
Thank you.
Kelly, I appreciate you being here. She did this presentation for our regional commission, which Hill Johnson and Harry and I are part of. And I reported, Council, I did not do it justice. So I'm glad you're here to really put us on the right footing with this. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right. That being all the introductions and presentations, next we have our citizens' comments. And this is where, if you have an item that you would like to address Council, we ask that you go to the podium, name and address, and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Now, that is the normal time that we give in public comment sections. If you deem down the road that you would like to have time on a future agenda, then your group may want to talk to Randy Wingfield. And while I'm at it, I am remiss that I did not recognize Andrew Warren, who was just this week appointed as Assistant Town Manager, so.
Congratulations.
So, does anyone like to address Council?
Yes. My name is Larry Martin. I live at 2850 Ronoche Street in Christiansburg, Virginia. I am here with most of the people that's left in this room to ask something of you that we need your urgent attention, your urgent action, and also some understanding about. For years, there was a, I'm going to call it a boarding house, that was at the address of 3195, 3197, and 3205 Ronoche Street. For years, we had fights, we had problems, we had 67 police reports that we had with us in a two-and-a-half-year period. After this building was condemned, partially because it was a math lab in part of it, we was promised by the town that this building would be demolished. We have, Mr. Lilly, which is going to speak next, has a letter stating to us that by March the 30th of this year, those buildings would be gone. They'd be history. We was not going to have this problem again. On July the 2nd, we had a meeting up here for the Planning Commission, when we learned that they was trying to put a boarding house, and I want to call it a halfway house, and there is a big difference. The person wanting to buy this property just wanted a house, drug offenders and ex-convicts out of the jail within 100 feet of our houses. And the studies that we found, and we brought gift to the Planning Commission, is very stated that 67% of these people commit crimes within a two-year period. The first time it was down there, we had to call the police because they threatened my mother. My mother is here, she's 85 years old. She lives 75 feet from this place. She cannot defend herself. I don't understand several things when I've talked, and I've talked to Randy, and Randy has tried to help me very much on this. These people come up here and comply for a conditional use permit, and we had 57 families here against it. 27 of them spoke against it before they cut us off on time. Three days later, I was called by Andrew saying that she had dropped this petition. So we thought that was the end of it. It was gone, it was done. But then we come to find out that she don't need this conditional use permit to do this. And that part I don't understand. Now, this lot down here, these lots are divided into three different lots. I've got one minute left. I'll try to hurry you, okay? One of these lots only contain 1.119 acres. It has a building on it to size 28 by 24. My question is, Randy thinks, pardon, says that she can put four people in each one of these plots, that's a total of 12 people. But I don't know how you're going to put four people in one building that ain't 28 by 28. But my, our question to you is, we're asking you for immediate, immediate desire to change the zoning ordinance so that a boarding house or a halfway house cannot be in a neighborhood such as ours.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I really, I would have depended on you, Council. And this needs immediate, fast action.
Thank you. I actually gave you four minutes, but that's beside it. John, are you next on the agenda?
Hi, thanks, Sid. I'll make a brief, Mayor.
You can have one three minutes.
That's what Larry says.
Thank you for listening to me. My name is John Lilly. I live at 3135 Ronoche Street, which is pretty close to this property, probably 75 yards maybe. A little history about myself, I lived in 3135, 375 for 54 years of my life. Knew from a coil when I was six years old. Been a Montgomery County town Christiansburger for years and decades. I guess my biggest question in, Mr. Mayor, Council, we're, we're not against halfway houses. Those places need to be, they don't need to be at this property. And I spoke previously at the Planning Commission, these folks, and I shouldn't generalize, but for the lack of better words, I will, they need access to services, doctors, things of that nature. Not down on the other end of Ronoche Street. Safety is a big concern. We have child cares, we have churches, if you're familiar where the location is. Elderly people, rental property with single mothers, the females. It's just not a good location. And we ask for your consideration on that. One question, like Mr. Martin mentioned, this, this property was condemned, and I have official town document that states, it's hereby ordered that the structures, including accessory buildings, be repaired, made safe and sanitary, are demolished and removed at your option by the close of business on Friday, March the 30th, 2018. And I'm not pointing fingers at Mayor or the town council. I've just rode by that property coming up. It's still there. The windows are busted out. Actually, the plot board that was on some of the doors is off now, for whatever reason. The front door's open in the center of the building. So I just don't know why we haven't, I don't know, we haven't acted on this. Like again, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
I can't tell you, the building was secured at one point. I don't, if it's open again, then we'll try to address that, but it was secured.
Good answer. Go ahead, John.
That's, you know, there's back taxes and things of that nature, personal property taxes, I don't know this part. I don't know how we can go forward if it's not safe for anyone to live there. I know there's asbestos there. There's got to be lead paint. This is a 1920 model structure, so we all know it's there. And I just, I'd ask for your consideration, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lilly, do we have copies? Do you have copies of that for us, or?
I do not.
I would like to see what he's referring to.
Staff can make copies.
Staff can make copies.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm P.L. Griffith, better known as Duke, to these people here. I'm town council too, I'm sure. But the reason I'm here is my, I live at 290 Patricia Lane, and my backyard joins the church parking lot, the Big Baptist Church parking lot. And people do come through that lot sometimes into my back. Don't come in my yard, but right across the fence. And there's no reason in the world why these type people that they're going to bring down there would do any different. They're going to be out, they're going to be out, they're going to be walking through the neighborhood, and they, they're in jail for a reason. And I cannot understand why the people that want to put this boarding house thing down there for them would want to do that in a, in a neighborhood like ours is down there. We have a real nice neighborhood. And the, the people that, like I said, have been in jail, they apparently did not care about themselves or anyone else, or they wouldn't have been there. And we are, and we're here tonight to ask you all to let, not let this happen to our neighborhood. It is, it is, it's quiet and nice there, and all these folks that live close by certainly don't want it. And I dare say that the people that are trying to do this would not want them to build, bring a boarding house with this type of residence to their neighborhood. And I know Ms. Peggy Martin, and she lives right at the site, almost, within, I believe you said 75 feet of it. And I know, I think she needs to be given a lot more consideration than any one of us far as the, far as keeping that, keeping that out of there and keeping it safe. That's all. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Hope you all give us a real close, good consideration.
Thank you, Duke.
And Mayor, and Council, and fellow citizens, I am opposed to allowing renovation or construction if they're demolished.
Excuse me, your name and, your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Marie Hager. I'm on 100 Patricia Lane.
Thank you.
Right across from Motel 6. I'm opposed to renovating or constructing any building, boarding houses, or other facilities that would house or treat people who have been recently released from prison, jail, or convicted of serious felonies, or sex offenses, or drug distribution charges and addiction. If they have multi-dwelling, and they're treating people for drug addiction, will these be volunteers or licensed medical officials? Because part of drug addiction treatment is the new drug they have for police officers to administer to drug addicts when they're passed out and almost dead. You need trained officials to administer these medications. If you have multi-dwelling, will they have jobs? Or are they going to be going around burglarizing homes to make ends meet? The lady that talked about the housing development said that a lot of these people are qualified, but do they have jobs once they move in? And will they maintain the jobs? I moved from an area recently in Pulaski, and we had numerous single-family homes with those individuals. And one home was recently busted. The only income they could come up with was raising and breeding snakes and selling them. And they had 10 to 15 children come in every day at dark and go out in the bushes to look for snakes. Now, this is just one example. Will these people have jobs? Will they have steady income? Or are they going to be prompted to burglarize? Did you know there's an elementary school called Honey Tree across from Motel 6? And I drove out from there to the proposed site. It's approximately 200, 300 yards from this elementary school. And I went to the school today, I said, what age groups do you have? She said, from four years old to fifth or seventh grade. How many feet is required with the local, state, and federal government to have sex offenders so close to a school? Not to mention all the residences that have children or grandchildren, and the churches that might have Sunday school classes. And one of the churches has ball fields, a play park for children of all ages right across the street from the proposed site. Please take heed to this. Ronoche Street, 460, is a one-lane road through that area. That road cannot handle the traffic going back and forth from New River Valley to Shawsville, Salem, and Ronoche already as it is. We almost get killed every day trying to pull out of 100 Patricia Lane with the speeding traffic. That's going to add so much more volume with the multi-dwelling. Is my time up?
In a minute.
One minute, thank you. And again, we can't assume these will just be single men. There could be single women. And you put mixed citizens in a multi-housing, multi-unit development, somebody's going to have to start having babies if they don't already have babies when they move in. Are you going to have multi-housing dwelling with babies and children living in a facility that has sex offenders? It's, to me, it's just wrong all the way around. And I please hope you'll consider these things.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, right here to strike, sure. Oh, I'm sorry, Danny, you're up. You already, you beat into the.
I'm sorry. I'm not very good at talking in front of people, but Danny Sowers, eighty, down that drive. I watch as a daycare, approximately the length of a football field from where they're coming from. Plus, if you walk across the road from there, there's a soccer field. Their kids, children are in there all the time. And I just wondered who's regulating this thing and taking care and watching these people 24-hour a day. There is nobody's going to do anything. I watch the ID channel here about four weeks a year. I'm going to tell you the truth. There were five people that killed in one neighborhood. Finally, when they got the person hit, the people come out with a halfway house to take it down. I mean, she, this lady was talking about a well-established neighborhood. That's us. All of us. We've been there. I'm 69 years old. I lived on this same pitch lane my whole life. I'm alive, never been threatened, and done good there. And then bring something, you know, it's good to have a heart for people that's, that's been in jail on this, but you've got to have a heart for us too. Somebody's got to. And this world is getting worse all the time. And if people like y'all and us don't do something about it and stop it, what do you do? But if they move in down there, there's no restaurants, no place to buy groceries, no nothing. What are they going to do? nothing, what are they gonna do, stay in the house all the time? Just sit in there and watch TV? You think they're gonna get along? Ain't no way. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Urban Phillips, and I live at 3190 Roanoke Street. I live almost right across from Ms. Martin. And I've lived there 22 years, and I've, you know, when they start talking about that it's gonna be a halfway house for people getting out of prison and all, I've watched for years, watched people get arrested over there, and then a few months later, they'd be right back over there. Well, if they're gonna take the people that they've been putting in prison and bring them right back to a place where maybe some of them have lived before, aren't they going right back to the same environment they was in? Now, that's, that's the thing that worries me, and I didn't speak last, at the last meeting, my wife did. But I live three, it's about 350 feet from my front porch to that property, in straight view, as straight as me looking at that screen. And the wife and I, we have planted trees and stuff to, to where we grow up and block the view, to where we can't see what's going on across the street. It's kinda like you're almost like in a prison in your own neighborhood. You know, my wife spoke about how beautiful a home Ms. Martin has and all. Now that the trees have grown up, we can't see those pretty lights she puts down on the fence and everything at Christmas and all, because now our view is blocked not only from that property, but from our neighborhood. I just, I think that by not being governed, a halfway house, to me, that's successful, would have some, some people living there that monitors what's going on, not just letting those people come in and say, "Here's you a room with a bathroom," and that's what most of it's gonna be. I've been in that building before, I know. Who's gonna guard them, you know? And it is a dangerous road. And I got a sick feeling one morning, I left, and it was still dark, and there was a guy walking down the road, I don't know if he was from that facility or not, there was no sidewalks or anything, running walking in the gravel, he was walking on the edge of the road, and dressed in black, and it was still dark, and I didn't see the guy. And when I got right up almost to him, he threw his hands up like he gonna hit me or what. I got a sick feeling in my stomach, you know, because I almost hit this guy. If you've got all these people staying there, and they have no transportation or anything, defeat is gonna be their transportation. And I don't see that area supporting the foot traffic and all for people that have to walk where they're going. Like some others have said, it's just not a, a facility that seems suitable for the people they're wanting to put in there. I would love to see something happen with that property, like the Habitat was saying, you know, put some, some nice places in there for people that are willing to help themselves. That's what I would like to see. They would be an ingredient in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Somebody else over here?
I do, I'm the mayor of town council. My name is Johnny Martin. I live at 3295 Roanoke Street, almost right across from this property. I spoke at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. But my question is, and what I'm asking for the town council here is, this property has been zoned B2 business, I believe. I'm, I'm not asking for it to be rezoned, but what I'm asking the council to do is, because of the way that it's structured now, because of the ordinance that the town has, you could have a boarding house on each property. What I'm asking the town council to do is to, if it's zoned B2, and you could have one boarding house for four people, so be it. I'm not, I don't want a war with these people. I like Mr. Lilly and Mr. Griffith, that have, have lived at this property my entire life. I've been there since 1964. I would really like to see something happen with this property that's been condemned. My father has passed away, but my father got this property condemned years ago. You'll see his name on, on the signatures. Property taxes haven't been paid. You guys know that. You're aware of all the things that have went on there. And the only thing I'm asking is that you not allow two more boarding houses side by side, whatever that looks like. I, I don't know how you guys do that. If, if ordinance can be changed, what has to be done? But we're not opposed to any business. If Ms. Martin would like to put a business there, we would like to have it. This is a community. When I look out here and see every one of my neighbors, every adjoining property owner is here tonight, everyone, there's not one person in our community that wants this boarding house, three of them, side by side. And all we're asking is to please this community that is, these people who make their living and have lived there, my mother, one of them, we're only asking for consideration that that ordinance be changed, that there could not be three boarding houses side by side. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Johnny. Anybody else back in there? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Peggy Martin, and I live right beside of this building. And my question is, y'all condemned it, not fit to live in. And she's been over there all week, taking down all the boards that y'all put up. Now, who gave her permission to do that? Did y'all give her permission to do that? She is uncondemning it. She has taken down all the boards. She's been over there all week. I see her every day. Who gave her permission to do that? Somebody had to give her permission. Did y'all give her permission to do that? My question, do you, did you?
Not of the council.
Did this town give her permission to do that?
To be honest, it's something I'd have to check with the building official on, whether she has permits to remodel. When a building is condemned, they do have an option of repairing the building, or basically boarding the building up, securing it, or, or, of course, demolishing the building.
So you gave her permission to uncondemn it?
She couldn't really uncondemn it. If she got permits to remodel it, then, then we could potentially approve those permits. But I...
The place is not fit to live in. I don't care what she does to it. It's not, it, it, it is not fit to live in. All she is after is money. Why don't you go back to Floyd and build one there? She doesn't care about us. She don't care anything about us. We live there. I've lived there on the end of White Pond since I was born. I mean, I'm only a very short distance from where I was, where I lived as a child. I mean, why does she want to come in a community that does not want her to make money for her? Go to Floyd, make some money. I mean, go anywhere. I don't see why she wants to do this. I mean, she really doesn't care anything about the people. She cares about the money she is making off of these poor souls that do need somewhere to go, but they, that is not the place for them to go. I mean, I, I built a diamond-foot fence just to keep them looking at it. It cost me several thousand dollars. It just, but I can't stop them from coming over there. I don't have electric fence to keep them from, from coming over there if they live in there. The people that lived there before went around and telling people they was gonna rob me and our husband because we was old and they could get, get money from us. I don't know if they thought we had a bank inside or what. But I, I just, I don't understand. I don't understand why, that they are allowed to go over there, unboard this way, and start building on it. I, I mean, really, I, I'm not asking y'all to stop her. I'm begging you, I'm begging you to do something to stop this woman. I mean, like I say, I, actually, I'm 86. My children forget I had a birthday. But I could just want to live out my life there in peace for bacon.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Terry DeMone. I live at 70 Patricia Lane. And I just kinda question motives on this whole thing that they're wanting to do. The property has been condemned. It's not been acted on. I think that the order said that it was supposed to be something to be done by March of this year. It's not been done. It fell through the cracks, apparently. And I don't know what the procedure is, but nothing has been done. As I understand it, the taxes have not been paid. If it's not, if the taxes aren't paid, then who's gonna get the property? The owner apparently doesn't wanna put the money into it by paying taxes, by doing any improvements, by tearing it down, none of this. I think they're just waiting for federal money to make that property worth something. And then they get our tax money. We will pay for them to profit. And I don't think that's right. That they are, they are not doing anything but asking for a handout. That's, as far as we are concerned, that's all they want. And I don't think that you should allow it. So please, consider, not only what everybody else has said, but consider the, the whole Christiansburg community, because are you ready to build sidewalks all the way out there? Both sides of the street, maybe? I don't know. Whatever else is necessary for these people, as they, if they live out there, how are they gonna get to town? Are you gonna provide transportation for them? Is the city of Christiansburg ready to do that? I don't believe so. There's so much more to this than what we're bringing up, and you probably already know that. But it's gonna cost the community a lot of money, and it's gonna cost us our safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Is there anyone else that has not, has anything any different than what we've heard? We've heard a pretty good cross-representation of these things. Yes, sir. Well, not impugning the reputation of the people that are trying to do that work, that's not the purpose of, of a public comment section, and I'm remiss that I did not stop this earlier. So if you have something else to add?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, my name's Dave Potts, and I live at 1177 Goodlands Ferry Lane in, or Road in Newport, but I'm a property owner at 3155 A Roanoke Street. And so I come with a little bit different. I wasn't born in Christiansburg. I'm a transplant ex-tech student that stayed, married into the family, and I do love that area down there. And I just wanted to give you a different sampling from someone who wasn't born and raised here. What I'd like to say is, one, I, I do believe halfway houses are needed in the right place. From everything I've seen, this is the wrong place. And the more I've heard, the more I believe that. I was at the planning commission, and I heard both sides, and it just seemed like this was a square peg in a round hole. And then now that I've seen more, that this building was condemned, set to be demolished if it was not repaired, somehow it did not get demolished, and that would have been to everybody's joy that's here today. Now it's back, possibly going to be toyed with or rebuilt, and may be allowed to have borders in it. And I think it's just discouraging that there's been so much wrapped up in that property, and it's sat for so long. And it's, it's an eyesore, and I do believe it needs to be completely demolished, and if rebuilt, something like Habitat for Humanity coming in, where you have single-family homes matching the rest of the neighborhood, not a halfway house facility, especially unsupervised. And I think that's asking for trouble long-term. And so from my perspective as a property owner, I'd just like to see you change the ordinance if you can, just because it was a boarding house 50 years ago, or 40 years ago, and it didn't work out, somebody's now allowed to still do it again. I'm not sure if that's exactly the right use of the ordinance, but I just think you wanna rethink it on this property. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Someone else have something to add to the conversation?
Thank you. My name's Alder Rook, 690 Powell Tower Road. I don't live quite as close to some of these people here do, but I'm like him, I'm kinda guessing, but I'm not gonna kick none of that down. My question is this, there is a simple answer to all of this that would satisfy them, would satisfy you, I think? This property is being condemned, it's supposed to have been tore down. Why don't the town go ahead and take it for back taxes? Get rid of this problem? It would be a headache all for you. You put her, you put her and these people complaining. And as some suggested, maybe if you didn't do anything else with it, give it to Habitat for Humanity and, and let them do something with it. But place under conditions, whichever way it go, in a six-months' time, it would have to be destroyed and gone, and that eyesore would leave. I just thought that would be a suggestion you could think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can you give me a few points of clarification? The property is actually zoned B3, general business. And as I mentioned, when we condemn the property, we do give people the option of basically rehabilitating the building, or boarding up and securing the building, which they actually did to the building. Also, in regards to the B3 zoning, the B3 zoning has provisions for boarding houses of 1 through 4 by right, and the provision for boarding houses requires a conditional use permit for 5 through 14 persons. And also, in regards to the taxes, the taxes were actually paid prior to the condition, the town taxes were paid prior to the conditional use permit application. So, so they were paid. There is outstanding utility bill on the former tenant's name, but that's a former owner.
We have no permits at this point in time? We have no permits outstanding at this point in time to allow renovation?
As far as I know, it, it was satisfied when it was secured and boarded up. Whether or not the building official has given a permit to basically unboard it, to work on it, I'd have to check with Jared.
Okay, that's fine. And you'll do so?
Yes, yes, of course.
Thank you.
Did you say the taxes have been paid on it?
The town taxes were paid prior to the, basically the conditional use for the application.
But not by the owner?
I'm not sure who paid the taxes.
Yeah, I, I know how that worked. It was a little bit unhanded, I'm sorry to say.
Marissa, did you have a question?
I did.
Ms. Sacks, I'm sorry.
Could you please explain by, could you explain the by right?
By right use is a use that is allowed, basically without council approval, without any other additional approvals. And it's generally thought that the use is thought to be a fairly, I guess, moderate enough impact in that particular zoning district, that it would be allowed by right versus the conditional use permit, which allows council the opportunity to put conditions on request, or of course deny the request if they think it's an inappropriate request. Whether or not, I think what basically you're hearing is whether or not it's an appropriate use to allow it as a by right use period in that district. You know, it could be council's decision if you want to refer it to planning commission, and it would require planning commission review, because it's in the zoning ordinance. Whether you would want to amend the code to disallow the use, whether you would want to change the code to some type of conditional use permit for any number of persons for a boarding house, that'd be at council's discretion. But it would take basically two, either a joint public hearing or two separate public hearings, planning, commission, and council, and basically it'd have to be referred to planning commission.
Okay.
But this is then before planning commission recently?
Well, they heard the conditional use permit request, and after which the request was was withdrawn for the property.
Okay. So they would have to reapply?
Before the conditional use permit, if they were pursuant as a by right use, they'd simply have to give us a site plan.
Or we need to turn it to planning commission and have it rezoned or zoning?
Have the zoning ordinance amended.
But the conditional use permit was asking for some more for site.
14 units, I think.
One to four, they don't need anything.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Can you explain to me how taxes get paid, and nobody knows who owns it, or all that process?
The taxes, I believe, were due on that property when we received the conditional use permit application. I think they were paid. I can't tell you without necessarily tracking down their check, and I don't know that I could tell you who paid it. You just know they were paid. So I don't know if I can tell you at least right now.
Okay.
Are we allowed to make a second comment?
No.
I have a couple of questions for, I'd like to add, wait, if everyone's done commenting.
I'd like to.
Do you have anything different than what we've heard so far?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is Barbara Martin. I live at 2850 Roanoke Street. I have two things that I think are different. One of them is the property values of all of our homes and our properties around there. I think our property values would decrease, which would in turn cost the town of Christiansburg, because you wouldn't collect as much tax money on our homes if our properties got damaged. And the other thing, I would kind of like to ask someone to go down there as soon as tomorrow. I mean, it's been said that it's got to have asbestos in it, it's got to have lead paint. I think many, many years ago, it was some kind of station, that they had an oil tank or fuel tank in the ground that's not being removed. I think someone, I mean, I think someone needs to call EPA and have them come down and see, you know, see what's there, what kind of safety hazards are there. And, you know, I would ask you to keep anyone, including Ms. Martin or anyone else, off of that property, pulling off the boards that have been put up there, because it was condemned, going inside, looking around, and messing with stuff that's physically not safe. And I would ask that someone, as soon as tomorrow, go down and do something until some decisions can be made to keep that property. And I would hope that if anything went forward with construction on this site, that someone would be watching real closely regarding the permits for asbestos removal and those types of things, the paint, the lead paint, so.
Thank you. I can assure you, there will be not one, probably several people down there tomorrow. All right. Very good.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. We've got several of us on councils, maybe all of us have been lit up with emails. And I can see this even, the concern is very clear. But I have a couple of questions. Has the conditional use permit that was requested, was it requested for a higher density than what we're hearing? And this is not for public, this is for Mr. Wingfield. Was it requested for a higher density than what the concern is being expressed about here?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So it wasn't, it wasn't that, okay.
It was a conditional use permit request, which was allowed 5 to 14.
So the applicant then come down and was told they needed a conditional use permit, and then all of a sudden, they didn't. They were requesting above that threshold?
Correct.
Okay. There is a difference in the zoning between the residential, for many of the folks we're hearing from tonight, and the business. I understand that. Has Teresa, has Ms. Fontana been involved with interpreting what a boarding house is?
We have a definition of boarding house.
Okay. And I haven't done the homework on that, because this is just getting on our radar screen right now as council. But, okay, so I need to research that. And then the last thing is, I think staff realizes that this is a hot topic right now. Just to put it in simple terms. And I would like to know, for one, I would like to know what our options are very clearly and very quickly.
If you would like the zoning ordinance changed, the thing to do would be to refer it to the planning commission.
I'll make a, well, if we get a council discussion, I'll make a motion to do that tonight. But I would like, I would like from staff and our expertise, between you all and our attorney, what are our options?
When is this going to come up, or planning commission?
We don't, we don't know. We got a sign out. But she doesn't have any other permit coming to us.
She withdrew the density issue, but she can still put up to four people per unit, right?
If you follow the normal processes, then it would take about two months, probably six to eight weeks, probably best case scenario. You could have a combined joint public hearing, which we went away from several years ago. But that would probably slow the process, speed the process up a week or two.
Okay. We will, in our discussion later, we'll discuss. But I get a general nod that this wants the zoning change or ordinance change, we'd need to go before planning commission. Thank you. Anyone else hearing? None. I will close the citizens' comment section. I want to thank all of you for coming out. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll go into committee reports. Anybody? Steve, you got anything going?
Sir, we'd like to thank you all. Like I said, we are, please, your questions, emergency fast. Double meaning to stop this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Thank you.
I'll make sure to get a copy of it back. Actually, I'll find Jerry in line.
I need to see if he was drawing. I didn't know this.
All right. Any committee reports, Mr. Collins, from recreation, or anything?
No. I want to thank you for coming to the Lung Transplant Foundation motorcycle ride this weekend and making a speech for us. And I appreciate the volunteers from the ACE program being there to help, too. They were awesome.
Luke, if we're going to carry on a conversation, take them all the way out of the roof. And go ahead and close the door behind you. I'm sorry, Mr. Collins.
Oh, it's okay. I want to thank you for coming to the Lung Transplant Foundation motorcycle ride this weekend and making a speech for us. And your presence there means much more to me than you know. And I want to thank the ACE people who came to help us also. We had about eight to 10 of the ACE people there that helped us the whole day, and they were awesome.
Thank you. Street committee, anything?
Nothing on street committee.
Okay. Aquatics?
Yes, I have a couple of points. I just wanted to, first of all, acknowledge that, you know, last weekend, the Roanoke City, Roanoke County swim meet was held right here in Christiansburg, and it went over well. And this coming weekend is going to be a meet with the swimmers, going to be about 500 of them. And it's a long pool, it's set up. If you have not been over and seen the pool, when it's set up for 50 meters, it is very impressive. And so that'll be going on. I think it starts Thursday afternoon, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And it's going to be about 500 kids in there. That's all.
Water sewer meeting coming up sometime soon?
This week?
Friday?
Yes.
5 o'clock?
Yes.
Okay.
About 30.
About 30-ish.
Oh, I'm correct. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bishop, anything for fire rescue?
No.
Okay, thank you. Discussion in actions by mayor and council. There's nothing really on the agenda. However, I do believe we need to make an assignment to the planning commission for whichever it is that you all choose you want to do on that projected property.
I'll start the conversation by asking Mr. Wingfield if that's the, if that's the path towards, is it the quickest path towards some type of consideration in action by council?
I think it would be, is to send it to planning commission.
Well, then I'll make a motion.
It's actually required, if you're going to amend the zoning ordinance, it has to be referred to the planning commission.
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Before we vote on it, I'd like to get some, this is the first time that we've heard about this. I mean, we knew the CUP was coming, and we knew that that was pulled. I didn't know this was coming. And I'd like to get some help, you know, some information from Ms. Fontana, you know, as to what the options are for this.
Mr. Collins, I think the, I think the action we need to do tonight, I mean, if we're going to wait for information, we're going to lose two weeks in the signing this to the planning commission to study. So I'd like to at least, if council...
That can be done tonight, too. But, yeah, but still, I'd like to have some information, you know, you know.
I'm sure we'll get plenty of it.
Yes.
So, but the motion in the second on the floor, I believe, is to assign it to planning commission.
On a fast track.
Fast track.
Yeah, that's fine, too. Yes.
Does that mean joint public hearing?
Absolutely. That's what it takes.
Joint public hearing, yes. And Madam Clerk?
Can I get the second?
Steve.
Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Shelton?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
Madam Six, thank you very much.
I would like to, you know, because this was the first I've heard of this, that we give condemned property owners an option to button up their house. I was under the impression, what we decided, and this is before you came on board a couple of years ago, that these condemned buildings have been around for a very long time. And my impression was that we were not giving them, they had the option, and of course, we would work with them if they wished to improve their property and bring it up the code. But my impression, when we went through all this a couple of years ago, and Harry, you pushed this through, and it was a great thing that we did a few years ago, but we did not, my impression is we didn't give them an option to button up the house. I mean, what does I do, what does I do for our community to give them an option to board up the windows?
Doesn't help anything.
It doesn't help anything. But that was my impression, that we were moving forth with a very aggressive plan with properties that have been, this isn't a one year or two year, these are properties that, you know, have been, you know, unused, dilapidated for years. And this kind of came out the left field to me, that we give them an option to button it up. If ain't anything, you can't guarantee that vagrants won't move in there or...
And the option was...
I want to know council's impression, because most of the options that were on here. And I did not get that impression, that we allow for them to board up the windows and doors.
What I thought the options were, that the owner, he could put it down in the ground, or we could put it down in the ground and charge them. That was the only option.
Or we would work with him as long as he's willing to fix it up. We would not jump in there and tear it down and put a lien on the property.
But...
I think the property has been boarded up, and only recently...
I'll give you some good examples. A lot of properties that are under consideration for changing hands and things like that, Jerry will give them extensions and things. And like I say, boarding up might be an option there, if we think it's getting ready to change hands.
Well, you're talking, how long has this thing been boarded up? It's been more than two years.
Yes, it has. And that's, I think, like I say, I guess there's been some potential movement of it changing hands or being redeveloped.
If I was an absentee landlord, and I didn't want to put any money into my property other than the minimal, I'd be, and you guys reached out to me, I'd put you all for about 10 years, you know?
Was the CUP request done after March 31st?
It was filed in, over June.
Okay. So there's something on record that should have been demolished by March 31st.
Yeah, it should have been.
It should have been.
And there's a deeper issue, and I've thought, or I've already, I understand where you're coming from, and that's a good point. I'm very interested if, after the date came past about the condemnation. But there's a deeper issue here, and that is, even if the property was condemned, and they were able to build something back, there's still the same problem there.
Right. That's right.
There can be. But I don't think, I don't think a boarding house is something that somebody desires to put half a million dollars into.
Well, maybe, I agree, I agree. But the bigger issue, I think, that we have before us is, is this an appropriate land use in this particular location for intended use? And what can we do about that?
And I think the ordinance would help that throughout town. But, you know, there are other dilapidated properties that this could happen to around town. And I want to know if...
But that's why we have halfway house, or...
Right. But, okay, if this doesn't work here, well, guess what? I'll pay the property taxes for this absentee per owner who lives somewhere else. I'll pay your property taxes. Here's what I want to do here. Now, an ordinance would help with boarding houses, but I'm more or less saying, we all jumped on board of this policy. And these aren't houses that all of a sudden were dilapidated one year ago, or started to fall down one year ago or two. These are properties that have been in the vines for decades. And my impression was, there was going to be no quarter. We were going after them, and we were going to take the process and tear them down. I don't want them boarded up anymore. That's not an option anymore.
I think Jerry is going through the list fairly aggressively. He's condemned, and we tore down two buildings in the past year that basically taxpayers funded to demolish the buildings.
Right, but that's what we agreed to.
Yes, it is. We probably do need to put some more money in the budget if we're going to be so aggressively doing it. Part of the reason I think Jerry hasn't been as aggressive though is because of the cost to taxpayers if we're suing ourselves. We would rather give a property owner an opportunity to do something with it, if we think that's going to happen realistically. I know there comes a point that you have to say, either you need to sell it, or you need to do something with the building. And I think if you look at the buildings we have demolished, I think we've been very gracious with those, to be honest.
In the past year or two.
Look at the front building, we were literally sending letters there for probably about a decade before we demolished it. You know, should we be more aggressive in pursuing it? I think we probably should be.
Well, that was the message from council. That, this wasn't something that we've been debating for two years.
And that's what's said.
Two years ago, we said, this is what we want to do. We understand it is going to cost taxpayers, there's not going to be 20 houses a month that we demolish in this town. But the whole point was to protect property rights, property values, and issues like this, that's now coming before. So what I see is that we've become, in my opinion, this issue coming up, we're becoming pretty slack with this. And councils, you know, what we desired to happen two years ago is not happening.
Tell you what I'm hearing, though, is funding. Is that right, Randy? I mean, there are a number of homes that need to be...
Jerry's got a list of probably 13 properties, as you're saying, that he's looking at for condemnation or has condemned. If you're looking at demolishing all of those, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
How much, how much of the two houses we tore down this year? How much was that?
Off the top of my head, I can't necessarily tell you. Probably...
Let's say 10 to 15,000, depending on the property.
Smaller houses, yes. There are a couple of large ones. And I know the one off Depot Street, Jerry's in constant contact with.
The one for sale?
I think that one, I think that one was around 10, and the one right there was maybe about 15.
Right. But I don't think we're going to pull the trigger and tear down 13 houses in the next two months. But, I mean, we can't afford to let this go 10, two years, and then have a letter saying you're going to tear it down, and then we just don't do anything.
And with the houses that he's on his list, how many of those have been fixed up?
At least three or four have been repaired.
Have they seriously?
To satisfaction.
Okay.
I'd like to get an update on that list.
Sure will.
And Steve, I know you're concerned about costs, but you helped push this through. For 10 to 15,000 dollars, we're not talking about millions. And this is something we agreed to protect their neighbors. Okay? That's why we did it. And I appreciate Harry bringing that to our attention.
Oh, yeah. Well, you know, and back then, we said, it's not right for your property, it's not right for somebody else's property to affect the value of my property, and vice versa.
And boarding up is not an option. Boarding up the property is not an option.
And the group that was here tonight was not an insignificant group of malcontents. This is a huge issue. For every person that was here, there's probably 10 others that haven't taken time to come down. So, I mean, and haven't been on council as long as I have, you don't see this type of ground swell very often. And so we need to do, we need to at least have something for council to know what our options are. And I am concerned And I am concerned just after what I heard tonight, and, and from this sampling, this is not, this is, this is a bigger issue than just the people that were here tonight.
Okay.
I wanna update on those houses that we've got on our list.
And, you know, do we need to be looking forward to budget for the next year, to put more into the budget to demolish these homes?
We can, and of course, we'll probably do a budget amendment in September, we can try to budget some funds for 4th.
Okay.
I think everybody would support that.
All right, thank you. Okay, staff reports, Town Manager?
Other than introduction is Andrew is the Assistant Town Manager. Of course, now we're gonna be doing the search for Planning Director.
And Andrew will do both jobs until that's over?
Yes.
Will he remain the zoning administrator even as the Assistant Town Manager?
He would remain zoning administrator and subdivision agent, at least until we feel comfortable with those titles transferring to somebody else.
Okay, thank you. Madam Attorney?
I have nothing to...
Okay. Any other staff here to report? Council reports? Anything else other than, go ahead.
I do just have one comment that I had mentioned to Randy as an update on where we stand on the buy more local, small, if you don't mind just a minute.
Okay. We do have, I guess, purchasing policies in place. We do, basically, $5,000 purchases or greater, we do get three bids for all those purchases. And basically, anything under 5,000, while we have the, the ability to do it without three, three bids, or three, three quotes, we can, and we still do try to basically buy local. One thing we've asked with our business license forms this year, we generated a list of all the services available for local businesses as they responded. That way, we have a list to go by for purchasing. Each department head has the list, and anyone involved in purchasing also does, so that we can basically more easily purchase locally. And we will even locally still try to use three, three quotes even less than $5,000.
Okay. I'm sorry, but that was, maybe I didn't phrase it correctly. We, we had talked about forming a committee to where we could make progress, and that's what I was hoping.
I, I honestly don't think it's up to this Council to micromanage the things Town Manager and Town Finance Director does. We know, you all know, our, our position is that we want to buy locally as best as we can, but not at the cost of quality and quantity and service.
Okay, I might have to correct you on that, because we had discussed in a prior meeting how we all had understood and agreed upon that it was something that we were going to put into a committee to discuss, and that's what I'm asking for the update. I mean, we had all discussed it and agreed that that was something of a concern. So that's the only thing I was asking for, is, is it still on the radar? Is it, has it been thrown into a committee for further discussion? That's my concern.
It hasn't. It could be brought up if, if you'd like, the Central Business District Committee.
What, I mean, I think we, I remember...
Yeah.
Us talking how we wanted to help more local merchants...
Right.
Get the towns' business.
And I'm not interested in micromanaging. I think we, we all had understood that there is a need for just looking at this to see if we can make progress. And I just don't want it to fall through the cracks, 'cause I haven't heard anything from you.
Well, I'll gently correct the mayor as well. This board establishes policy, the staff carries out policy, and the staff advises on policy, but ultimately, this board decides what a policy is. And I understand there's some constraints with state laws and, and, you know, things, but I would support, I, I support a look into this. I would support if some, you know, I'll, I'll just go on the record and say I support looking at it, just to make sure we're doing as much as we can to buy the rules and also to support the local business. And this is not, Ms. Sacks and I have never talked outside of Council on this, and this is bigger than Ms. Sacks. This is, this is, we've gotten other letters, I'll tell you, we've gotten other letters from HOE's people, other, you know, people where, and I just meant, I've gotten letters at home from other businesses concerned about this. And I'm sure we're doing the right thing. I'm sure of that. I don't think there's anything underhanded or anything going on. But I think this is bigger, this is for our whole community to make sure that we are, we, we ask a lot of our businesses, and we should be supporting them as much as we can internally. So without saying more, I would support whatever this Council feels is appropriate as, as a closer look at this, but this board does establish policy.
It does, and we established that policy, and when we directed our Town Manager and Finance Department Managers to consider in their bidding, local businesses, if they don't get, if they don't get the bid, they don't get the bid. We do try to include as, as much as possible. We've been on record urging that we continue to do this. Now, if you want a committee to study it, that is up to you all, but I, I think right now, with what we came across, I think we got a couple bigger fish sitting in the pond we need to deal with first. I'll do whatever Council wants to do. Hearing nothing.
Well, I, I, Marissa, are you willing to lead this? I mean, Mayor, you can do an ad hoc committee. This is something very short.
Although I'm passionate about it, I don't feel like I'm the one to lead it. The last time we discussed it, I believe it was gonna be thrown internally...
Okay.
Into purchasing, which is what I was following up on.
For, for staff to work on it, not, not, and then advise Council staff with, probably working with our attorneys to make sure...
Procurement, and, yes.
Okay.
I would recommend for your benefit that you stood back from that.
Yes.
And, well, I know it is all, I mean, this is open session, I would recommend for your benefit you don't, but I think we, as a board, I would like to support your concept, and not just, is for the whole community. And if that means a committee of staff and a couple Council members, that's fine. But we're elected to make decisions on the people's behalf, and we represent citizens in the business community, so if one of us wants to do something, I think we should support at least a discussion on it, and I think it's a worthy cons, or a worthy consideration.
Can you meet with procurement and Teresa and get something back to us within 90 days? Would that be suffice? A recommendation?
That would be great, thank you.
All right, so it's purchasing and attorney. Mr. Warren, you gonna sit in on that as the Assistant Town Manager?
Mr. Warren.
Do what?
I'll be sent, but...
Your quote said you want bigger opportunities.
Shop local. All right. If you would, if you would join in on that, Ms. Tweedy, someone from your office, probably. If not you, I know you're heading out of town for a few weeks, but Diana?
I've gone that long in happy days, a long time.
Well, yeah. But I think possibly, and I know we tend to wanna put department heads onto it, but I, I think, Mr. Tweedy, you have pretty good deputy assistant, it might be a...
Yeah, we'll, we'll put something together for you.
Thank you.
Very good.
I can ask one question. Who owns the properties that we've been talking about tonight?
I believe it's a corporation.
There's, there's two owners. So...
One's T. Howe, Clark?
Secured Assets Inc. owns the small parcel that they're referring to. And then Thomas Clark owns the old, the old tack and saddle shop, as well as the, as well as the old boarding house.
What was the first company? Again, the first company's name?
Secured Assets Inc.
You can get on our GIs and look at that.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins, not, I mean...
Montgomery County GIs.
More information on that.
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks.
Any other staff reports? Hearing none, Council reports?
I've got one.
Okay.
Well, here on the other side of the coin, you know, I have been on Council for a long time, and I've always been anxious to hear something about the marketplace. And we always have talked year after year after year, is something gonna be done about the marketplace? And it looks like something is gonna be done. And I really think that's a tremendous boost for the Council, for the town, for the community, for everybody. And it looks like the, this marketplace is gonna come around, and it's gonna be a very viable entity that we're gonna have here. And on the other side, too, you know, I think the mall, I don't think they can announce it yet, but I think there's a lot of changes that are gonna be happening in the mall in the near future, new, new people coming in, new retailers, new life going in there, so maybe it's a good time to bring this out right now, a little bit of good news of, of what's going on here in Christianburg. And I, that's the way I really feel. I feel the marketplace is probably the biggest obstacle that we've had the whole time I've been here.
We've dodged some retail bullets on that. National trends, we were on the reverse of national trend.
Right.
Okay, I've been, you're done. Okay, this'll be short, and, Mr. Mayor, who's your expert resolution maker? Is that Ms. Anika?
We can turn it over to her.
Real short, I've never met this lady, but y'all probably read the, or the News Messenger, but Kathy Odell at the CMS has taught for 11 years, and she won the National Science Foundation's Presidential Award for Excellence. There's only 108 of those given out nationwide. It is, the National Science Foundation is a big fat hairy deal. And that's, those are the people give big, big grants to Virginia Tech and stuff, but she's been identified as a superstar, one of 108 nationwide. And I won't go through her background, but I, I would like to recommend to Council that we have Ms. Odell to our Council and honor her for her accomplishments here. That's quite an accomplishment. And she took a 15-year break between Rutgers University and getting her master's of tech in childcare, so she's come back to work, and it's a pretty amazing lady.
Okay.
I'll give it to you after the meeting, thank you.
Do you have a, do you have a copy of this?
Yeah, we, I've seen her.
She's got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
She'll take care of it?
If Council's pleasure is, I'd like to do that.
Listen, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping in before.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, you are.
I am. You good?
My meetings are all in the future, yes, sir.
You good, Harry?
Yes, sir. I'm good.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't, since we're on resolutions, and I hate to sound something else to Sam and Marissa, but I do know that Mr. Poff and the eye doctor's in downtown...
Man.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Man.
Dr. Man?
Yes.
I know they've done a lot for downtown with the sculptures and, and if, has anybody been into the Mockingbird, the building up here, and gone upstairs?
I've seen pictures of it, but I haven't seen it.
What Mr. Poff has done right there...
It's expanding more and more.
Yeah.
Right, but they're real, he's really doing it the right way. And if there's any way that we can do a resolution to honor that, and maybe encourage other business owners downtown to do an investment like that, I mean, if you guys don't mind, I'd be happy to attend a meeting and participate, but even a resolution would mean a lot to the community.
We can definitely add it into the meeting to discuss it next time if you agree.
To discuss, yes.
To discuss, yes.
Okay, so we're turning...
A resolution costs nothing to the town.
I tell you, Poff...
Central Business has got that sitting at your next meeting?
I'll put it in my notes, yeah.
I tell you, Poff has done...
So just a teacher for now?
Teacher for now, but start writing the other.
I tell you, Poff has done more for this town than anybody I can think of. I mean, I think it'd be, it's, it's high time that we just do a little bit something for him and what he's done for Christianburg. I would support that 100 percent.
Okay, so thank you. Couple of things, the bike share program, I believe, is back on track for August the 1st at 10 o'clock?
At the mall.
At the mall?
Yes, I have it all there.
Okay. We appreciate the mall's partnership on that, too. So I think you have had emails sent out to you about who can attend, okay? And to, to, what is it, Mr. Howard? Segue on to what Mr. Huppert said about the, the marketplace. I know that Walt Rector and, and his partner were very, very complimentary of the way the town has worked with them. I think our decisions about one waiting until the property changed hands before we ever made any kind of move for a new, for a new entrance has been the right decision. I think it will spur a lot of things. It was, I, I was glad to see that he has local partners in this thing, which puts a little bit more, I think, to, a little more matter of permanency to this thing, that these people are gonna be here and, and be involved in the project. I was fortunate enough to go over to the, to the grand reveal, and it really looks nice. I know I've seen, I think I sent attachments over to everybody. If you clipped on the little blue lines, you could see everything that they, they talked to us about. But I think it's gonna be good. I was, I thought that, very aggressive by school starting in 2019 was, that was good